Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you to Lauren for promoting me to panelist. I couldn't quite find the link.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy birthday, dear.
Yeah.
Happy rainy season.
Chair Murphy at 6:00 PM if you want to call the meeting to order. Chair Murphy?
I see six o'clock.
Can you hear me?
Are we okay to get started?
Can you hear me? Chair Murphy?
Carrie, are you ready?
Yes.
Chair Murphy, can you hear me? Oh, no.
We have been having a few kind of glitches, so let's maybe Carrie needs another minute. It's mainly been with audio. So last week she could at the council, she could hear everything. It just no one could hear her. So let's give her a second.
No problem.
It is nice to see everyone. Seems like it's been a long time since we've had a meeting.
You know, I do see that Hans, who I asked to join this meeting, he's our reviewer for Lancia Adobe Fire Protection District. He has his hand up and I wonder if there's if we can see what he needs right away.
I don't think we've called the meeting to order, so Noah and JPI could wait and then make sure to open it up to.
Whoever you want to do it. Yeah, it's just I asked him to be here tonight since he did review the application we're going to be looking at. But I don't think, well, anyway, let's see how what it would happen.
Okay.
Well, he's all good.
Does participant web ID? I got that. I give.
I need I need you to convert me over.
It's got me as attendee. I need to be a panelist. Mm hmm. Hello? Testing, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Carrie.
I apologize. It appears I had to call in again.
Okay, I think everybody else is ready if you are.
Okay. We can call the meeting to order.
Hans Hennerberg is has an attendee and he may have some questions. We're not sure about. We'll go ahead and get going.
What is that sound?
Great. I. Does anyone else hear music in the background? It was a nice way to start off. Um, okay, I'm hearing a little bit of an echo. There we go. I think we're okay now. So I will call to order the City of Cattati Planning Commission's special meeting on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And we will start with Agenda Item B, which is Planning Commission Reorganization.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. So yes, as happens every January, the city council has a process where they the existing mayor is replaced by the vice mayor typically. And so the planning commission follows a similar process yearly where the existing chair relinquishes that seat. And there's while it's typically assumed that the vice chair would would take that position. In my experience, it's it's often helpful to kind of go through a nomination process, make sure the vice chair is ready and able to fulfill that role. You know, we all have challenges and things that happen in our lives on a day to day. And so it's good just to check in and make sure the vice chairs is still able to fulfill that role. Nominate and vote to install the vice chair as the chair. And then the planning commission then choose it takes the time to nominate and choose a new vice chair who backs up the chair and, you know, leads the meetings if the current chair is not able to. And then also looks to the following year to hope to be able to serve in the role as chair.
Okay, thank you, Noah. So if I'm understanding this correctly, we will first verify that our vice chair, Vice Chair Lemus is still in a position where she is able and interested to be nominated for the chair position.
Correct.
And yes, I am, if that's what you're the next step. I am in a position where I can I'm willing, if nominated, to take the chair position.
Wonderful. So the next step will be, can we get a nomination for the chair position for 2022?
I'll nominate Sylvia Lemus to be the chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes.
And I'm showing Commissioner Rodriguez absent.
Yeah, we received an email saying he was not going to be able to make it this evening.
And then the next item will be to ask for any nominations for a vice chair.
That's correct.
I think Sylvia's okay if she wants to choose a vice chair, but I'm happy also to volunteer.
Yeah, I was just gonna move to nominate Neil if Neil is interested in being the vice chair.
I would accept that, yeah.
Wonderful. Can we have a roll call?
Who was the second on that?
Second on that? Oh, I'll second. I'll second that.
Do we have Chair Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then as a follow up, is it now appropriate for us to hand the meeting over to Commissioner Lemus? Or should we wait until it is? Okay.
Oh, yeah. Chair Lemus is now in control.
I'm up. I'm up. Okay. Okay. So thank you. So the next item, thank you, everybody. And thank you to Vice Chair and all the other commissioners. So the next item we have on the agenda is a roll call. Is that a regular roll call for the entire commission? Is that correct? Yes. Can we go ahead and start that stuff?
Did we want to do an official roll call at this time?
That's correct, Carrie.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Moore?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Murphy? Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock? Vice Chair Hancock?
Yeah.
And Chair Lemus? Chair Lemus?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So next we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes. So we have in our packet the minutes of June 21st. Should we do them one by one? That's probably how we should do it, right? Okay, so we have the minutes of June 21st. That was in a packet. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st?
You don't, actually, Chair Lemus, you don't have a quorum for that because John is not here. And so there doesn't, there's no, there's not three of us to go down those minutes.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And that might happen on the next minutes also.
Okay, let me let them see. Okay, so that's for the minutes of the June 21st. We'll have to wait on those. So we're going to postpone those to the next seating. And then the next one's for September 7th. Let's see. Present, yes, we also don't have a quorum for for September 7th. And then for the, we do have a quorum for November 1st. So does someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 1st?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 1st, 2021.
And I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. And now for the next item, recognition, we want to recognize Chair Brittany Murphy for serving this last year. Is there something the staff is going to speak on for this recognition?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Lemus. I just wanted to just take a moment and say thank you to outgoing Chair Murphy. You know, she served on the commission since 2019, came on right shortly before I think I was hired or right around the same time as me coming to the city. You know, served in the role as vice chair prior to being chair last year. And just over the last two years, you've all really experienced the challenges of the Zoom meeting format and just the overall pandemic issues that we've been dealing with. And Chair Murphy, as all of you, just have done an excellent job with this and just really want to just take a moment and say thank you. And just really, as staff, you know, we really appreciate how much Chair Murphy and again, all of you really just remind us of the community perspective and really kind of point out the things that, you know, we may be taking for granted or may not be as laser focused on as we should as staff, just trying to deliver professional work. But, you know, neither JP or myself live in Cattati, and so we just really appreciate Chair Murphy always kind of bringing back that point. And overall, the commissioners kind of reminding us of the 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 community perspective. I just want to say thank you and then obviously give all the other commissioners a chance to to say thank you. I think their tradition in Cattati is to have a cupcake, which obviously this is a little challenging format to do that. But I think we have rain checks on order. But I think we have rain checks on order and maybe a couple of years worth of rain checks for that, once we are able to all get together in person.
Well, thank you, Brittany. We appreciate your leadership for this last year, and it's been really difficult for all of us and not being able to get together since I started. I think I haven't, other than I've seen maybe Neil somewhere at the Cattati Plaza, but I haven't really got a chance to interact personally with anybody. So hopefully in the future, we'll have that opportunity to meet Brittany and to interact. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. It's very kind.
I agree. I, I think you've done a great job, Brittany, and like you said, under these circumstances, with glitches in audio and, and everything that we've had to deal with. And I think you've done a tremendous job. So thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, Brittany came on board and we had one of the biggest packets ever. And that was the introduction Brittany had to the meeting and dove into it. So this last year has been, been very good, you know, just keeping it on track. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I look forward to the cupcakes.
Okay, thank you. And the next item we have is, are there any changes to the agenda for today?
No changes, Chair Lemus.
Okay. Any oral or written communications that we received?
I don't believe we received any other communication separate from the packet. Carrie?
We have not received.
We have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we're gonna move on to the matters at hand. So today we have a request for a use permit, Eagle Eye Cannabis. And is there presentation reports by staff on this?
Senior Chief Harry says this one.
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight we're talking about Eagle Eye is the business name. They're requesting a Level Two Cannabis Manufacturing Use Permit. This pack, this begins, this is Agenda Item H1 and the, begins on packet page one nineteen, excuse me, of your packet. I do want to say that the applicants are online. The applicant is online and is available for questions as well. Representative of the Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District is also online and is available for questions at the end of this presentation. Good, thank you. Next slide, please. So I want to give you some background because I know cannabis doesn't come before the planning commission too often. And normally these permits go to the city council, except for where there's a use permit requirement. But in November seventh of two thousand seventeen, Cattati voters passed Measure G. This established a cannabis business tax. Upon the successful implementation of that tax or the voting in of that tax, the city moved forward with adoption of our commercial cannabis ordinance. As well, it, it established the parameters for personal cultivation on residential properties. And it basically creating the law that all homegrown marijuana must be grown indoors. So no outdoor growing anywhere within the city limits was a big part of that. And established the locations and regulations for commercial cannabis activity. And essentially that really put all the cultivation and manufacturing uses kind of in the industrial area. As well, it allowed for a couple retail uses in the Commercial Ravenstein corridor area. And it established a maximum allowable number of different commercial cannabis uses. So we actually have limits on the number of cannabis uses we can have, and I'm gonna talk about that briefly in the next couple slides. So anyways, since February eighteenth, the city council has granted permits to eleven potential businesses. Some of them have multiple licenses, but of those fifteen, eleven businesses are operating or, and more importantly, they're making progress towards operational businesses. So we don't have eleven actually operating at this time. We have a few that are operating. And then of those fifteen, six have expired or were withdrawn or abandoned. So no business was established at all. And we still have made those permits available to others that might be interested. Next slide, please. And this is kind of the breakdown of how it is. We break, we allocate our commercial cannabis licenses out of, into three broad categories. Cultivation, manufacturing and distribution, and manufacturing and distribution. So the manufacturing is where you're taking cannabis leaf and making other additional products out of it. So it could be, could be candy, it could be like oils and wax that people use for vaporizing. It could be topical creams, it could be food, pretty much anything that you would make from cannabis product. Cultivation is obviously where you grow the marijuana and process it. And then within manufacturing and distribution, that also includes testing facilities. Under the framework of the state, all legal cannabis is required to be tested. We don't have one of those facilities, but it would be within that particular category. And then we allow storefront retail, and we have two of those businesses. So currently, we basically, the city has one license in cultivation available and one license in manufacturing and distribution available. And you can see how Eagle Eye has been where they fall. So they, this is the applicant tonight, and they have been granted a medium indoor cultivation license. That would, that includes distribution. And they have been granted a manufacturing license, type seven. The city council authorized, but it would require this use permit approval tonight. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what, what, what that means in a couple more slides. All right, next slide, please. So just generally, it's located at three fifty-one Mercantile Drive. It's in the IG zoning district. You can see that parcel highlighted with the star there. It is surrounded by other industrial uses. The Laguna de Santa Rosa runs along its southern property line. And actually, directly across the street are two small vacant lots. Just for consideration. And then one is down in the lower left there. What I'm showing you is kind of what uses are allowed in that district, in the IG. Cultivation is permitted. This is permitted by right with a commercial cannabis permit from the city council. Level one manufacturing, that's manufacturing that doesn't include the use of volatile hydrocarbons as solvents. That's permitted. Testing labs are permitted. Delivery only retailer is permitted. We allow one of those licenses in the city. Level two manufacturing, what we're considering tonight, requires a use permit. And distribution is permitted in this district. Storefront, retail and microbusiness, those are only allowed in the CG zoning district. And if you're curious, a microbusiness is somebody that holds, the way we use it, is someone that holds a retail license and, and at least two other licenses, like manufacturing and distribution or cultivation and manufacturing and retail. So they get bundled into one license type called a microbusiness. And that's consistent with the state. Next slide, please. So Eagle Eye LLC, they were granted a commercial cannabis permit on December eighth, two thousand twenty, by the city council. That included level two manufacturing. Now, the way it works is if you're given, if you're granted a level two manufacturing license, you can still conduct level one manufacturing, which is the use of non-volatile substances. N refers to a license type that the state issues, which, which includes like the infusion of cannabis into food, things like that. And P is basically packaging. So just packaging and getting things ready to go. So all that would fall into level two manufacturing. So they get to do all of those with a level two application. They were also granted the permit to allow for cultivation and distribution. On June two thousand twenty-one, they applied for building permits and they were issued. These are for tenant improvements consistent with their approval. They've had, I think, one or two inspections since then. So they are in the process. And then I think we're having a miscommunication is what happened is I contacted the, the person that works for them and, you know, asked about their use permit. I think they didn't, they weren't aware that they needed this use permit, that it was, they thought they had bundled it all into the original application. And it's completely understandable why that might happen. But, so anyway, at that point, they said, well, let's get the use permit application in. And now here we are tonight. On January sixth, we mailed out notices. It was posted in the paper on the seventh. And as of tonight, we have not received any comments on this, on this application. Next slide, please. So this is the first floor. There's also a floor above the office area in the top right and a little floor above the nursery on the left. But pretty much the bulk of the facility is downstairs. And the area where this manufacturing would take place is about a little over two thousand square foot area, kind of within this nineteen thousand square foot commercial industrial building. A building that previously had house woodworking and proline electronics manufacturing in there. And next slide, please. So level two manufacturing can involve the use of volatile solvents in the extraction process. So it doesn't, level two manufacturing, like I was saying before, it allows you to do level one manufacturing as well. So they're not obligated to use volatiles, but it gives them the ability to do that. And by volatiles, I mean solvents such as propane, butane, hexane, these type of solvents. And it requires a closed-loop system. And this is a very kind of stripped-down view of what that system looks like. If on, on the left, you would have a tank where your solvent goes. And then in the middle tanks, and I believe that's how this is set up on this particular system, in those middle chambers, you, those chambers are filled with your cannabis leaf product or bud product. And the solvent is pumped out of that tank into the, where the cannabis is stored. As the solvent passes over the cannabis, the oils and the, you know, the THC and the CBD dissolve into that solvent and is kind of pulled away from the plant material. Then that solvent is then pumped into that collection chamber, which is heated, which allows the solvent to then cook off, which, and then delivered back over to the solvent tank where it's cooled. And that basically creates a loop process. So that those solvents are never released into the air. These tanks require third-party testing and annual certification. And the below is kind of what I've been saying before, with a level two type seven license, you can do level one type manufacturing with a level one type manufacturing. You can do infusion of products, and with the type N-type license, you can do packaging. So it's, it's kind of like a tiered system, the way it works. One more slide, please. So this was reviewed by all city departments and several of the other agency, most importantly Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District. And the conditions of approval that came out of that review, they are on page seventy-seven. And one of the ones I wanted to highlight because it is one of the major safety ones. It's one that we hear most about from our applicants, how difficult it is to create a satisfactory tar. It's not a simple deal. But it's a technical assistance report that examines all the different uses and all the hazards that are potential and all the safety mechanisms that must be in play if you're gonna be using these type of chemicals or materials. So those are there for your review. Also, I want to say there's something very unusual about cannabis use permits. Unlike any other use permit, they're tied to the operator. They don't run with the land. They go to the operator and if the operator were to leave to go to a different building or sell or transfer the business, that's it. That expires the use permit. So it's a very unusual kind of use permit situation. And then I also think it's important that you understand, like, if you were to choose to deny this application, Eagle Eye still can conduct a lot of business. They can still do level one manufacturing under the license that, or the permit that was given to them by the city council. They can still distribute cannabis. They can still cultivate cannabis. So all those things they can still do. So really tonight, the question before you is, will, will you, would you allow the level two manufacturing? And I believe that's it. Let's go one more slide. And staff recommends adoption of the resolution, granting a use permit to Eagle Eye, allowing for level two manufacturing cannabis products. And that resolution begins on package page seventy-four. And with that, I'll close. I'm available for questions. And then, like I said, the applicants are here tonight, as well as Hans Henenberg, who can also answer questions if you have questions about the fire department and how they view these activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, J. P. So now, when I'm looking at the staff recommendations, there's two things. There's a use permit, consideration of use permit, and also the resolution. So that's the two things that we.
Resolution would is, would be granting, if you adopt the resolution, you'd be granting the use permit.
I see. Okay. Okay, so at this point, I think we'll go to questions of commissioners. So if there's any commissioners that have any questions of staff from the information that was presented today? I see Neil. Raise his hand. Go ahead, Neil.
Yes, hello. Thank you. Thank you, J. P. there. I've, I've got a question at the back of the resolution. On page, PDF page eighty-three, there's item forty-one. It's about the fire department. And it's mentioning the Petaluma Fire Prevention. Is this correct or it, it almost looks to me like forty-one through forty-three may be applying to new building, and this isn't a new building, but it's referencing Petaluma Fire Prevention Bureau rather than the Adobe Fire District. So maybe it's just a technicality.
You know, since Hans is on this call, I'm gonna see if Hans is available to answer that question. He provided the, the conditions. Kevin, can we get, oops, looks like we lost him. Oh, he was made a panelist? Yeah, okay, he's a panelist. We just, he just needs to unpause himself and then he can speak.
Okay, now you guys can hear me. That's what had to happen. I was getting worried about you. I apologize. That's a typo. I, I, I do work for several jurisdictions, so that, just scratch that out. That will be Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District. Or Rancho Adobe Fire Prevention.
And does it, this isn't a new build, but it seems to imply, I mean, what if the roads aren't twenty-six feet in width? The. Number of conditions in there that. Number of conditions in there that um seems like it comes for a new build.
Uh no, the uh anytime you have a change in use or a change in occupancy, then these fire requirements come into play. So it's not just a new building or a new building. It's a change in use, change in occupancy. So that's uh that's where the conditions come into play. If it is more than thirty feet high uh to the roof, then uh the aerial apparatus condition applies for twenty six foot wide roads. Otherwise, it is simply a twenty foot road.
So in that case, even if we were to approve it and the roads went wide enough, then it would effectively be it would not come into force or you would have to negotiate. Uh I mean, have you looked at the roads there? Has the applicant looked at the roads?
Uh we have looked at the roads, yes. And I'm trying to pull up my memo note from uh when we noted the conditions. Uh and let me, let me pull that up real quick, but I believe we have all the appropriate conditions noted. And that was PA twenty one fifteen. And we noted on November uh November sixteen, fire sprinklers, fire alarm, fire department access. The what what it is is we, on those conditions, we note that if it is more than thirty feet tall, then you have to have twenty six foot wide road. Otherwise, it just, you construct it as a twenty foot road.
So you don't know at the moment whether or not the roads fit that. I mean, looking at it, when I were went past the site, it looked like they were wide enough, but
I I believe so. I'm, it it's been a while since I've looked at it. And we looked at the information that was available to us for what was provided. And that's where we noted the conditions. But if the, if if for some reason, the uh the building is not over thirty feet or it doesn't require appar- aerial apparatus, then basically the the condition is fulfilled. And they don't have to do anything else.
Okay, and then the normal operation, they would need to maintain that distance, all access from the building. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's uh uh under fire code requirements, they're required to maintain the uh their access at all times.
Okay, it doesn't say on there thirty feet, but I guess um thirty feet tall, but I guess you've got a quote. I hope it's on that quote for the CFC five oh three.
It that uh CFC five oh three, that's the fire code section five oh three, which calls for that, for those requirements. I'll probably have, we can, we can modify the conditions specifically to uh to what meets, but it, I can guarantee you, we don't make them do anything that is not required by code or something that's not appropriate.
Right, I'm just sort of making sure it's clear for, I mean, for what the current construction is and um.
Right. Now, is JP, is this a one story building?
It's it's a two story building. Um but I do believe it is weight, uh I believe it's less than thirty feet. I've never measured the height. But if it is, it's it's close, but I would put it on the less side.
If it's, if it's two story, most likely it's less than thirty feet to the roof. So the twenty six won't be required. It'll just be the twenty foot.
I can also say that the building itself is um is about a hundred and seventy feet long and it is more, it's about twenty six feet on each side. Um it it on the entrances on each side of the building. So you would be able to drive along the whole front of the building and along the sides of the building, no problem. Whether or not you can make that turn to the back of the building, that I don't know, but I I I do think you can. There's a loading dock in the back. Um so I would assume it could fit a fire apparatus vehicle, but still you would be, you would be meeting that hundred and fifty. You'd be able to reach the entire building with a hundred feet of hose.
Okay, good. As long as that's clear. So we we shouldn't, we, do we need to add? Would we need to add the thirty feet tall in there or is that implicit in the?
That's implicit in the code section.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the only question I've got.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hancock. Um any of the other commissioners have questions for staff or anyone else on this item? Okay, um I I had a question. I had a question on one of the uh conditions uh of approval on page eighty five. Um item number forty eight, where it says there's a fume hood drain that has direct connection to the uh sanitary sewer. And it's going to be protected by berm or standpipe to prevent any chemical spill or leak to sanitary sewer. And I think, yeah, my concern was, I just wanted to understand that a little more because I know that there's Laguna de Santa Rosa behind there. And I just was concerned and had questions about the environmental um um aspects of it. And was just checking about how often that is um inspected and whether it's contained inside the building or how that would kind of like protect environment from any spills or anything. If I could just hear a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so I'm I'm, excuse me, Charlie Miss, I'm gonna have to apologize. I don't know the details of that. The condition was written in a way that it's kind of like if that fume hood connection um is required or if that fume hood has a direct connection to sanitary sewer. I don't know the answer to that. I do know that those type of elements are reviewed all by the City of Santa Rosa Water Environmental Services because they asked to issue the industrial discharge permit for that. Um they also share the same concerns that you have about protection of the Laguna. As well, that is reviewed by, through the building department, uh if that's required through the building permit process and also the engineering department, since it deals with the sewage system, would be reviewing those things. I just don't have the answer that I think you're looking for is how does this lead to protection? I don't even know. I'd have to, I'd have to see what it would look like on a set of plans to understand how it would work.
So it sounds like the City of Santa Rosa Environmental Services is kind of putting this requirement in there. They have some sort of standards and checks and measures um for this area. Okay. Okay. Okay, that was just kind of the one thing that kind of um stood out to me that I was kind of had questions about. So now at this time, do we go to the public or does anyone else have questions before we go to the public?
I I had a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Um I actually, just clarification, I wanted to make sure I was understanding this correctly. So um for consideration today of the use permit, it's just for this um manufacturing of volatile materials. And my question there was, when the city council approved this, was there understanding that this was included or would this be a new uh what's the word, I guess, permission or a new type of work that could be done that wasn't originally in um what was approved by the council? I don't know if I clearly understood that.
Uh no, uh yes, I, well, let me put this way. Yes, we're very clear to the council when they approve something, whether or not there's additional approvals that are required. Um in this case, at the level two manufacturing, we did disclose to them that it would also require this use permanent approval. Um I will say this, the application you're looking at is identical to the application that the city council reviewed. Um there have been no changes in proposed operation um or anything also.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay.
Um and then I'll I'll ask it just in case, but it seems like it's already then been considered by the council. But um it looked like everything you showed us visually was a very self-contained process. Um but just to ensure we're doing our due diligence with the use permit approval, um would this manufacturing of volatile materials have any sort of um consequence of like additional smells or anything that might impact nearby neighbors or the community that maybe we hadn't thought of during the original approval process?
Um smells in this operation are not our concern. Our concern is the the fact that these are explosive type materials that um that's why this gets elevated to a use permit. Um the review, it it that's our primary concern with that. It's it's not odors. It's not noise. It's not any other environmental potential other than the fact that um uh faulty equipment. Uh these are the big, when you hear about the people that bootleg this kind of stuff, it's when they're playing around with this that those fires um get started, which is why we're really strict about the 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 really the volatile hazard of the aspect of it. Other than that, no.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification for, to help you understand, and JP mentioned the tar, the technical assistance report. Uh this is what we've been insisting on is these type of operations need to provide a report by a fire protection engineer that knows these processes, these systems, so that we can incorporate all of these protection uh within the building and within the uh equipment itself. Uh and part of this technical assistance report is, is that normally in all of our manufacturing industries, all the things that we normally do, is equipment that has been listed and tested by uh underwriters laboratory, by manufacturers. And so they have a history that these this machinery is safe. What we're dealing with in the cannabis industry is we have a lot of equipment that is not listed by some testing agency and it's just manufactured by some folks in their backyard. And uh so this is part of the problem of an underground in- industry coming into regulation. And so this is where the technical assistance report provides that security, that we have a fire protection engineer that's knowledgeable in this work that can tell us that the equipment is safe. We look at the building code that and the fire code that we have sprinklers, we have fire barriers where required. And all this goes into the whole process to make sure that it's safe. And that's, that's the primary reason for that tar uh to make sure that all these safety factors are in place. Because keep in mind, the purpose of the fire department, the fire code is if there's a problem, we don't want anybody killed and we don't want to get in, all the neighbors hurt either.
Okay, thank you. Um and now if we can go to Commissioner Moore.
Yeah, I I had one question on that. Um so I see there's another level two manufacturing in the area. And did we do a conditional use permit for them?
No, in this case, you did not do a conditional use permit specifically for this cannabis. That one um and we're looking at that approach. It's second time. It's an interesting question that you raised. Um but that's, that property was granted a heavy, one of our more heavy industrial manufacturing permits for um using it was, they were doing anodizing of metal. So the whole building was constructed around a um basically how to deal with hazardous and harmful chemicals. Uh when we accepted the application, we felt that that use permit was sufficient for the cannabis activities, but um we're actually considering about withdrawing that application, not because of that, but because they haven't moved um forward with the application at a pace that we're comfortable with. But I think in the future we won't do that. We won't make that conclusion that a previous industrial heavier kind of medium industrial manufacturing permit would work under these circumstances. And that's because these use permits are tied to an operator. It has less to do with the manufacturing process, but the 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 nature of the use permit. Um if you follow all that, but um.
I do. I I was more in in, I mean, if they were manufacturing out there, we didn't see a conditional use permit, but you just clarified that they haven't even started. They just have the permit.
Yes, that's right. They have the conditional permit from the city council. But you do, we did uh examine that. So are, there are a whole lot of conditions that apply to manufacturing uh uses that run with that building, that run with that permit, that were applicable to that use, had they decided to move forward, if if you follow what I'm saying on that. Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is Noah House. I just want to chime in on, this is a good point for the commission to 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 think about. When a use permit's granted, uh that allows that use to continue on that site. Uh whether it's that that operator that's being granted or someone else. This is just a standard non-cannabis use permit. And similarly, um if a use comes in that's similar but less intense, then that original use permit that was granted is often used to allow that similar, less intense use to move in to that location, assuming they still meet all of the conditions of approval that were placed on that original use permit. So when the commission grants a use permit, it's allowing that level of use intensity and anything that's similar and less than. So it's it's good for the commission to think about uh how a use permit functions. And and then the distinction with cannabis that JP's mentioning uh is that there's more, they're typically tied to an individual rather than the property. And so we need to be thoughtful of that as we process these cannabis use permits.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? So I, Noah, I just would like a little bit of um um clarific- guidance on that, because I mean, that's a difficult leap to make, I think. I mean, previously, there was a, as a um some process there, a um um I guess a deeply industrial process. And I guess now there's a um uh I I guess it doesn't seem to me to be the same type of process in terms of the solvents and in terms of of um the type of operation. And the ITAR is very much, that report is very much appreciated, that analysis, because that's a complete, that seems to me a completely different operation. So now we have, we have a cannabis type operation, but we can't, I mean, I wouldn't feel capable of analyzing what are lesser usages that aren't in the cannabis industry for that site. So saying that there's a level one is fine with me, but saying that, hey, somebody else could come in and do some painting of a car, um because it's got solvents and and things, doesn't seem to me to make a lot of sense, but I don't know. That's just
No, no, that's, that's exactly right. So um typically, if say the uh non-cannabis use permit for automotive painting came before the commission was granted, to use that example, that's a good example. And then a cabinet finisher came in and said, hey, we want to open up a cabinet shop. Similar level of use and say, and they said, our primary element is finishing the cabinets, doing the wood varnish and those types of things. Staff would likely say that's similar or less intense than the auto body level of solvent, et cetera. The hoods are in place. All the conditions of approval to deal with your hazardous materials on that site have already been put on that use. That's what's called a continuing use. And so that would be allowed. But you are absolutely correct. The cannabis use permits are unique in that they do not provide that ongoing right to transfer to other uses.
Okay, so that's the key here is is that it's this consideration is just, it's going to be this and and the person who's put all these plans together, very in detail plans, the staff that's analyzed the fire department side. Um if it was to come up again, that similar per, the new person would have to go through that process, which seems pretty reasonable considering the solvents that have been used.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I I guess I I do want to make sure that you understand that they did go before the city council. They did get the commercial cannabis permit. There are tar, there is a tar required. We just um moved, we kind of viewed it under the scope of the old use permit, but they weren't exempt really from anything this applicant is doing as well. If it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner have any clarifying questions? Okay, if not, let's, staff, is there anyone in the public that would wanted to comment on this?
Attendees, please use the raised hand icon to speak and share your comments. Chair Lemus, uh that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a, a resolution before us and I'm looking to see if someone wants to make a motion.
I could make a motion to um, approve the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Khatati. Um, I'll read it full out if there's a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So this is a resi- resolution of the planning commission of the city of Khatati approving a conditional use permit to allow Eagle Eye LLC to perform level two cannabis manufacturing state license type seven at five three one Mercantile Drive, APM one four four oh one oh oh four five.
Thank you. Um, and can we get a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like this one passes. Um, thank you commissioners. And for the next item, we have a reports by staff. Do we have any reports, staff?
Uh, thank you Chair Lemus, uh, members of the commission. Just briefly, uh, just, you know, as I mentioned, it seems like it's been a long time since we've had a meeting. Uh, and while uh, that, you know, kind of shows that uh, not a lot of activity. On your part, staff has been full swing, kind of doing a lot of the background work for a lot of our policy documents. And so I just wanted to touch on those, give a brief update. Um, so the housing element, we are just fully underway, providing our consultants all the background materials and information they need to get going. Uh, the survey, which I think many of you have taken and then shared with your colleagues and friends around the community to help us get more input, has been very successful. We've had over a hundred responses to that. Um, and we are planning our first public engagement meeting for February second. Uh, we're partnering with Rona Park on that and the primary focus is going to be with our um, community-based organizations that provide housing services. Many of them provide services in both Rona Park and Khatati. And so uh, similarly, Rona Park uh, has the same um, public engagement consultant as the city of Khatati does. And so we uh, have partnered with them to, on this first meeting, to kind of outreach to all of our community-based organizations, the folk that, the folks that provide uh, housing assistance, um, legal assistance. You know, those kind of broader services that are often provided by nonprofit community uh, or the larger um, kind of big picture folks, not necessarily services that are provided at the city level. Um, that will be on February second, invites are planning to go out by the end of the week for that. Uh, and the idea is they'll have um, uh, community-specific questions, community-specific input sessions, but uh, in a joint meeting. So anything that's for Khatati will be Khatati-specific. And it'll be introduced and discussed that way. But we wanted to try to make it as efficient as possible for the service providers to be able to come and, and participate and give us as much feedback as possible. Uh, out of that meeting, we'll also be holding a few other stakeholder meetings. Uh, we'll look to some of the uh, community-based organizations that have direct input on some of the requirements for um, this housing element. There's a lot of new law that applies to this housing element, such as uh, the requirement to document how the city is affirm- affirmatively furthering fair housing, it's called the AFFH requirement, you'll hear more about it. But essentially, uh, the city is required to engage with the communities who often are marginalized or are not able to provide their input in these policy discussions. And we have to document how we've engaged with them, uh, the input we provided and how we've responded to that input to try to reach and provide for those housing needs that those folks uh, have. Uh, there is a stipend available uh, as a part of that to try to really help people who uh, may not otherwise be able to participate, to really help them out and give them, give them some options to maybe pay for childcare or, or take a day off work and, or a couple hours here in the middle of the day and provide some input. So that will come out of that February second meeting, but I just wanted to um, let the commission and community know about that. And then secondly, we're looking at February twenty second, which we've already done some polling with the commission and thank you all for letting me know your availability. Uh, that's a council date. Um, typically, the city council, uh, as you, I sent an email asking for uh, two commissioners who are interested in, in uh, providing input on draft housing policies as we move forward. Uh, and I similarly asked two council members. However, the council, uh, they could not settle on just two, they were all interested in providing input uh, on the draft policy and documents. And so they did agree to come to our commission meetings uh, as a joint meeting, uh, special meetings to provide input and discussion. So I anticipate those will be very lively. Uh, that being said, the first meeting date, of course, is affected by a holiday in February. And so we did default to the council date, I apologize uh, for asking you all to take some more time, but it is February twenty second and we will get more details out on the timing of that. If you have any time constraints, please do send that to me. Um, we're going to try to keep it as close as possible to the typical agenda, but the council also has their business that needs to occur, so I know it'll be a, a pretty in-depth discussion. Um, so that's February second for the outreach and February twenty second for the first um, joint special meeting. Uh, bike and pedestrian master plan is going on as well, as you know, we're doing that in-house. Um, we're just kind of getting the background analysis and uh, potential project list. So if you, as you're around town and you notice areas where there's a break in the sidewalk or maybe some uh, bike lanes need to be installed or even some reconfiguration of some things, please take a note of that and feel free to provide that list or save it up and provide it as we move forward. Um, this process is definitely going to be informed by the long-range safety plan that the city just uh, is finishing up with the public works department and the Vision Zero project, which is um, you know, a goal of having no traffic collisions uh, in the community. And so there's a lot of outreach and, and uh, analysis of our current circulation network that was done as a part of that. And staff plans on leveraging that uh, to inform the uh, bike and ped master plan update, in addition to uh, identifying any specific projects that need to be um, prioritized and incorporated into the plan. Um, that being said, there's been an email that was sent out, uh, Eris Weaver for the, from the Bicycle Coalition, Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition is a resident of Khatati and she's volunteered to uh, assist our staff with review of some of our policies and identifying some of these projects. And she would like to conduct a bicycle tour uh, for a couple commissioners. In order to avoid Brown Act limitations, we're trying to keep it to two commissioners. Uh, ideally, folks who may not normally uh, bicycle around to just get their perspective. But it will be videoed and we will uh, have that available on the website. Uh, there is a bicycle and pedestrian master plan specific website set up. Uh, if you haven't taken the time, it, it may be worth going to the community development website and looking around. There's a lot of information we've been adding, we've spent a lot of time on that over the last few months. Uh, similarly, there's a housing element specific worksheet uh, website. There's a location for folks who are interested in either of these topics to sign up and be kept informed and up to date on uh, all the specific meetings that are moving forward. Um, I'm also excited to announce that we've been able to hire a new staff member. So uh, the city council, uh, out of the last budget, did agree to fund a halftime position in the department. Uh, I was kind of concerned about being able to hire a halftime staff, but we uh, were able to find a very experienced um, halftime associate planner, her name's Autumn Bus. She's a Sonoma County resident, local, she's been an affordable housing developer, she's worked in housing, she's worked in economic development. She's run uh, agriculture-focused nonprofits. I think she's going to be a very good fit for the department and meets some of the, the needs of the community. And so I'm really excited, you all will definitely meet her as she comes forward and starts to present on some of the work that, that we've been assigned. Um, and getting to that, we have a lot of policy work underway right now. So as you're all aware, the Vurner ordinance, uh, that was carved out of the objective design guidelines to create its own standards. Uh, I did present that to the city council in December, they provided me some additional direction. And so we're trying to uh, get that ordinance finished up and brought back before the council. Um, they've also prioritized uh, staff completing an urban agriculture ordinance. So right now, you, if you're parcel zoned residential, you're not allowed to do any crop production at all, even if it's a large parcel that's very um, well-oriented towards crop production agriculture. And so that came up at, for a member of the community and the council uh, heard that concern and, and directed staff to start to work on that, so that will be coming for the commission. Um, and along with that, we will be doing the Fletti Ranch rezoning, which I know you all are aware that was a general plan priority, so we're going to pair those two. And we expect to be able to get those done into the commission in March is our goal. Um, also coming out of some of the regional climate protection authority, uh, RCPA efforts, um, s- city council did uh, direct staff to prepare a fossil fuel station ban. So we are full swing uh, working out to ban fossil, any new fossil fuel station in Khatati. That ordinance will be coming for the planning commission. Uh, similarly, the uh, general plan has directed staff to make some changes to the um, multifamily housing requirements in the uh, starting neighborhood urban zoning district. So that's been on the list of kind of priorities for the current housing element and general plan. And so staff is trying to pu- finish up some of the kind of laundry list from the current housing element before we have to report to HCD at the state about our status of all of those. And so that was a priority for this budget year and we do anticipate that coming uh, in the early part of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and then also, uh, lastly, I'll just touch on, we do also plan on working with the city manager's office to review and potentially update the cannabis ordinance. So the item before you just previously was one example of kind of some of the clunkiness that's built into the current ordinance. And so we'd like to take a look at that and try to make it a little bit more straightforward, streamlined process. And so what uh, we're imagining is trying to make things a little more linear and typical of other development processes. So maybe it'll come before the commission for a recommendation to the council. Uh, we might make a few other minor changes to address some of the needs of our cannabis businesses. I'm sure if you all are following the news, you've heard uh, the cannabis industry is, is under some severe strain right now. Uh, and it's kind of some of the growing pains, I think, of just industry, JP said, kind of coming out of the shadows. Uh, but we want to support them and do what we can uh, and still keep the expectations of the community. So we do expect to see some changes to that. Um, and then lastly, we're starting on the strategic planning process for next uh, budget year. So internally, staff's having conversations and we probably will have our first strategic planning session with the council in March as well. So I do expect twenty twenty-two to be a very busy year uh, for policy work and commission and council work uh, to get all these ordinances in place uh, to further support the community and um, keep meeting their expectations. So that's just, I'll leave it at that. Uh, but just so you know, two of the things we are looking to formally uh, put into the uh, schedule or agenda for next fiscal year is continuing on our greenhouse gas reduction strategy efforts. We had prioritized those uh, as a part of the last fiscal cycle and the fossil fuel ban kind of rose to the top as the most uh, prioritized effort, but there's other things we can do. And so we do anticipate keeping uh, that as a priority. And then also formalizing some more uh, public engagement processes into our zoning code for the larger development projects to formally um, direct how those engage in, in some pre-application meetings and things are really communicated to the community early, rather than some of the first time people uh, hearing about things is when they're presented to the planning commission. So just look for all that, but if you have other ideas, uh, staff's happy to uh, take them under consideration and present them to the city council or you're welcome to, as you know, uh, come talk to the council directly and let them know what your priorities would be for the next fiscal year. So with that, I will close the discussion, I'm happy to answer any question.
Okay Noah, those are a lot of projects happening. So I wanted to open it and see if any of the commissioners wanted to ask questions or clarification. Um, I see that Neil, Commissioner Hancock raises his hand. I'm sorry, Vice Chair, I'm learning, Vice Chair Hancock, go ahead.
What, whatever there, I guess, thank you, uh, Chair Lemus. Um, I just wanted to, Noah, Noah, did you have any perspective or um, inside dates on the closure with um, Commerce Boulevard? And um, sounds like a good project in Rona Park, but um, I just wondering if you knew when that might be being completed?
I think the date is summer of twenty twenty-two, so it is a big project, as you've mentioned. Um, uh, it's being handled by the Rona Park uh, Public Works Department. We have all of the contact information for everyone from the public works director all the way down to the onsite project manager. So if anyone in the community needs uh, that contact information, feel free to reach out to anyone in our department or public works and we'll provide that to you. And we're also hearing from those businesses over there how severely they're being impacted by that road closure. And so we are trying to uh, be responsive to them and we're working with uh, Rona Park to see what we can do to try to alleviate some of the impacts. That, I mean, a lot of them just rely on the drive-by traffic and uh, right now, that's not happening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions of, uh, staff? Okay, all right, thank you uh, so much, uh, Noah, that was a lot of great information. So uh, what about commissioners? Any commissioners have any reports for today?
I just wanted to say thank you for the lovely gift over the holiday. Um, I picked up my umbrella and my um, water bottle and I think that was a nice thing to do for the planning commission.
Go ahead. Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, hello, thanks. I just wanted to make a, a, a report. Um, yes, I got one of the bottles as well, so very good, that worked out nicely, I thank you, just in time with the umbrella um, with the rain, so very useful. Um, I've been attending something, uh, part of Pedaluma called an urban chat. And it's a, it's primarily a discussion, that's also looking at the Pedaluma general plan, but they're also very involved with the greenhouse gas issues, Pedaluma is quite dynamic with that. Um, and some of the road um, zero, um, you know, the zero deaths um, approach and discussions in there. One of the interesting things that came up though in the discussion, um, at one point is, is that if we are looking to specify more ports for electric chargers to do just the trenching for them, yeah, I think the question that was raised by one of the professionals, um, and they didn't directly answer this, but how much of the infrastructure do they have to put on the backend? So particularly for low-cost housing, they were suggesting that there might be some unintended consequences that if we say, hey, there's a forty-unit place and require twenty trenches for potential um, you know, high, high-capacity chargers, would all the backend infrastructure have to also be put in there? So anyway, it's just a question that I think we may want to think about and if possible, say, you know, whatever the zero-cost planning approach to that, just reserve some space or something that I'm trying to promote or at least ask questions about what, what is the backend, you know, the cap can, the connections to the network on that. Um, so just a, an area of um, as we move forward, there's there's things get a little bit more complicated than you first thought. A nice simple idea of just put the pipes on the pound, ground for the, the wires, does that, what, what impact does that have? So that was my report, thank you.
Thank you. Um, anybody else have any reports or information to provide? No, okay, okay, so that's the end, uh, reports by commissioners. And next step is adjournment, adjournment of the meeting. So I want to thank all of you for uh, a great first meeting of the year, very busy, a lot of um, items down the line. So thank you everybody and we'll adjourn the meeting here.
All right, thank you everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.